I'm going to ask our Commissioner, Maxine Holland, to have our prayer, please. That's why I am here.
Father, we come before you tonight just thanking you for another day. Thanking you, God, that you blessed us just to see another day. I was listening to a pastor the other day and he said, "God, every minute is important. We can only live for the time we're in right now because we don't know where our eternity lies right now. We could walk out and be gone in the next three seconds. We could sit right here and be gone." So, Father, I just thank you that we all get a heart that we can just thank you for where we are at the time we are. So, we thank you tonight, God. And as we go into your business for the people of Benson, we ask, God, that we keep an open mind, that we make good decisions. And, God, when we don't make those decisions, work with our conscience and let us know we've not done our best because we owe the people of Benson our very best. So, Father, we thank you. I ask that you bless everyone around this table, everyone in this room, and we continue to thank you for all things. Amen.
Amen. Our call to meeting, the order is standing. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for sentence.
I made that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I made that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Public comments. Recognize, uh...
He's not here yet.
Okay. Uh, the update on the fourteenth public comment complaint. Jay Murray.
Good evening. Uh, we had a complaint on down East King Circle by Sirona Alfred, uh, several weeks ago. So, we, Jeremy and I and Kimberly went out in a situation and, uh, Jeremy had his crew go out do some work on the, uh, which button was it?
The.
There you go.
They had standing water issues in front of both houses on both sides of the street. And there was a covered drain inlet behind the, uh, house on sixteen oh four South Maynor, which is just up in the very next street. That was covered up. This is the locations where we worked at. On both sides, you can see both sides of the yellow, that's, uh, houses on either side. And there's an asphalt compression at the end of the street. What had happened is that the grass and the dirt and everything had built up and basically built its own curve. So, water, rainwater wasn't actually getting into the drain box itself. It was just sitting on the street. And you see there's a little depression right there where it should be going into, into her drain underneath her driveway and into the collection box. Right there's, uh, the drain underneath her driveway where the water should be getting to, but it wasn't, didn't actually have the opportunity to get into it. And this is the drain box behind the one on Maynor Street that was covered up. So, it wasn't allowing any of the rainwater or, you know, water to flow into it and into the, the stream on beyond there. So, what we did, they came in, they cut back on both sides of the street, cut the dirt off, kind of leveled it out and tried to get a gentle slope to her driveway. And we uncovered the drain box on, uh, Maynor Street. This is what it looks like now. They cut it back and they threw some straw This is what it looks like now, they cut it back and they threw some straw down onto it. That's on the east side. And this we uncovered, Serona told me that there was a drain line, that they installed a drain line from that mailbox all the way around down the street. So Jeremy's guys dug it up and come to find out there was a concrete gutter there that we didn't know anything about. But at the very end of this gutter is that drain line that they installed. So what we did, they left the gutter uncovered. And I went back on Google Maps in two thousand and seven, this gutter was there uncovered. It looked like it hadn't been there for that long. So we went there, then we uncovered the grate, the drain straight behind Maynor Street. Oop, I guess that was it. But I did have, I did go back out after it rained this past weekend and let it pour last week and water does drain off it now. We have not heard anything back from anyone on the street. So that we, we double checked the drain line, four inch drain line there, the guys blew some water through, it drains fine. So hopefully we resolved the situation, it's a very level area down there. The only thing we have to do now is, there was a depression where there was a water leak at one time that they tried to fix and it kind of pulls into itself. So the next time Jeremy gets his paving guy up here, we're going to go back and fix that for him. So all in all, hopefully we're positive resolution for.
The other complaint that was given that night was about curb and gutter. And so I'm still researching that. I've talked to a property owner out there that has been there since nineteen seventy-two. She said when Keith was the manager, they had talked with him. Apparently the builder, the developer of that subdivision, in their paperwork, it said that they would have curb and gutter, but he never did it. And so by the time they came to the town to complain about it, it was passed like the statute of limitations to get, to make the developer do anything. So at that time Keith had asked the property owners, did they want to go in fifty fifty? So the town paid fifty percent and the property owners pay the other fifty. But my understanding is the town's leverage on the property owners paying would be a lien on their property. Which I, y'all can imagine, a lot of them didn't want to do that, so they couldn't get enough buy-in. I'm looking through the minutes now to see if I can find when that conversation was had. So Keith started in nineteen eighty-five, so I'm looking through board book minutes right now. But that's kind of where we are on the curb and gutter at this time. So we're still, we're still looking into that.
Thank you for the report. Anybody have any question? Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
You're welcome.
Zane is here.
Okay. Recognition of Sergeant Trent for the advanced certificate for training and standards. Greg Percy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board members. Tonight we're here to talk a little bit about the advanced certificate that Sergeant Trent just received. In nineteen eighty-one, the state of North Carolina, through the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission, began a program to award certificates to officers who had achieved education, experience, and training milestones. The professional certificate program was designed to recognize the level of competency of officers serving governmental agencies within the state to foster increased interest in college education and professional training programs and to attract highly qualified people in the law enforcement and criminal justice careers. Eligibility for these professional certificates is determined by a formula that combines formal education, professional training, and work experience as a law enforcement or criminal justice officer. Zane Trent, a sergeant in the Field Operations Division, recently was awarded an advanced law enforcement certificate by North Carolina Training and Standards based on his six years of law enforcement experience, having received an associate's degree and a bachelor's degree, and his completion of approximately nine hundred hours of law enforcement continuing education courses. Sergeant Trent joined the Benson Police Department in November of twenty twenty and has worked tirelessly throughout his time here to further his training and to obtain various certifications to benefit both the department and himself. The advanced certificate is the highest level of recognition from North Carolina Training and Standards, and Sergeant Trent has achieved a noteworthy career goal. He now joins four other Benson officers who have also received their advanced certificates from North Carolina Training and Standards. Congratulations, Zane.
Congratulations, you have a right to say something.
You want to say anything?
Thank you.
Well, let me ask you a question. Did I see a young lady come in, was that your wife?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, why don't you bring her up?
That's a turf she wants to come up here.
Well, tell her, come on up. Bring that too.
We're coming from a soccer game.
That's all right, come on up.
None of us were super fans of the game.
My wife believes training, my daughter Amelia.
All right, very good, always enter this camp.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do for the town.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it, sir, thank you.
Presentation of ADA transition plan. Ted?
Good evening, Mayor Medlin, Board members, Manager Pickett. Thanks for letting me show up this evening and I'm Ted Kellum. I'm a professional engineer with Withers Rabinell. And we were hired to help with y'all's ADA transition plan. So I've got a presentation here, I'll walk through if I can get back to where it was. Am I going backwards instead?
I think I'm going this way.
All right. Okay. I'll walk through this, I've got some script here, I'll read through just so it's more intelligible to y'all. And then feel free to ask questions during or definitely afterwards. Okay. Basically it's required, the required by the American Disabilities Act of ninety-one, any municipality that has fifty or more employees, and it was determined that Benson had approximately sixty full-time employees.
Now sixty-five.
Sixty-five, great, that's fantastic. And then the Department of Justice is enforcing it due to liability, and I can speak on that later if some questions come up. And if not adopted and implemented, then it could jeopardize funding through the NCDOT, some of the federal funding. In March of twenty twenty-two, the town entered into an agreement with Withers Rabinell to assist the town with the ADA assessment and transition plan. We actually hit the ground, there was some weather and other logistics, so we hit the ground in July of starting the actual assessments. And then the plan includes, the plan elements are of course, public input, identifying barriers, corrective measures, compliance schedule, and adopting an ADA policy and grievance procedure, and designate an ADA administrator and coordinator. So basically from the plan, we seek and include public input. We identify physical obstacles in the town's facilities, which we call the vertical assessment. Also, which allow public accessibility to buildings and pedestrian improvements, and that limit accessibilities to programs, services, and activities. We describe the methods that we use to make the facilities compliant and accessible, and then specify the schedules for taking the steps to achieve compliance. And then of course, adopting the policy at the end. And then also indicate the officials responsible for implementation. We did do a survey, and I've just put some up here just for y'all's reverence. Most, and it seems to be a lot of municipalities, the sidewalks garner a whole lot of input from comments from public just because of the walkability. They, everybody wants the walkability, especially downtown area. Public input was sought using the survey, the results from the outreach indicate the survey wanted to prioritize the sidewalks. Survey write-in responses indicated the desire for improved pedestrian facilities in the downtown area, stating that existing infrastructure was either uneven or lacking. Barriers to accessibility, but the PROAG is used, and that's Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines. Were used to assess the pedestrian improvements in the public right-of-way. During our assessment time, and I've got some, a bunch of pages of backup that y'all can look at later, but there were about a hundred curb ramps found that were needing some degree of improvements. And this was an example of one where it just needed, it needed the truncated domes. One of the requirements is to have a visible and tactile truncated dome. So I put that picture in there just for you to see that it was missing in this instance. Don't be alarmed, what we tell people, don't be alarmed about the hundred ramps. Standards have evolved over time, and what was compliant in nineteen ninety is not necessarily compliant now. So that's why a lot of these are found to be non-compliant for one reason or another. As you can see, when we were out doing our location, it was GPS located. So we do have a instrument that showed the actual location, and we had information for each location showing if the dome was missing or the four-foot landing was not appropriate, or there was some type of pole in the way. So it does denote what the failure, reason of the failure was. And each one was located on a map that we had provided to the town. Also for barriers, we do look at the facility themselves. And for that, we use the what we call ADAG, which is the Twenty Ten American Disabilities Act Accessibility Guidelines. And of the ten facilities physically assessed, all contained at least one corrective issue needed to be compliant with that ADAG. Many of the recurring items in Benson's facilities require relatively minor improvements like relocation of a bathroom hand dryer or installing insulation on exposed pipes underneath the sink, which this is a picture of that type of requirement. As you can see on the list over here, a lot of the things we find when we do our checklist are paper towel, hand dryer locations, grab bars, mounting heights, the sink drains, door swings. We actually do have a door pull that we test the resistance so that most people are being, can be able to open up the door appropriately. Sinage, whether or not you got that tactile sign, it's on the door letting someone maybe sight impaired to know what's male, female. And then our listing will show what was found in each location. The final items examined during the assessment were the town's ADA-related policies and ADA compliance with recurring events, programs, and activities. The town adopted an ADA policy and ADA grievance procedure on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is compliant with the suggested language of the NCDOT Office of Civil Rights Guidelines. The assessment also found that no additional intervention is needed for the town events and programs beyond what is already identified in the facility inventory. And I've just listed up here what I just said about the position statement was adopted in September thirteen, twenty twenty-two, and also the ADA grievance procedure. And then the programs and activities listed, the ones that were checked, and there's a total there. And y'all definitely have right many events and programs and activities, so that was great. Physically constrained compliance schedule, that is definitely one of the things of the policy. And y'all chose, most individual municipalities either choose a five-year compliance schedule or a ten-year compliance schedule. And Benson chose the five-year compliance schedule. It shows the remedial actions required for compliance, and items can be grouped for efficiency. If you've got them in certain areas, you can always do the small ones together or such. And the plan will need to be kept current. What we call it is a living plan, so as you go in and make changes, you denote that in a, an appendix at the end of the notebook or whatever it is that you keep it in, and you show which ones have been checked off. And then every so often you will update that just to, you know, again, to keep a running total of what's been done versus what's not been done. While this plan is designed to specifically itemize deficiencies that need to be fixed to become compliant with ADA standards, the results of the assessment are encouraging. Most of the facility intervention, interventions needed should not be resource or capital intensive. The final ADA transition plan, Ms. Pickett is lucky because the transition plan concludes by designating Kimberly Pickett as the town's ADA coordinator and ADA administrator.
For now.
For now, yes. That can change if for some reason titles change or others change. The program requires that a name be given with the position, so that's why she was put for both. But if someone else is so designated, then that can be updated. Upon adoption of the transition plan by the Benson Town Board, the designated ADA coordinator and ADA administrator, which happens to be the same person in this instance, will coordinate with various town departments to begin remedial efforts per the adopted compliance schedule. Modifications to the schedule are expected due to changes in project capital, new projects, or identified efficiencies that group multiple items together. The coordinator administrator, Ms. Pickett, will work to update the schedule appropriately and continue moving the remediations efforts forward. By presenting this tonight, going through the proper procedures, we're here asking the board to approve, adopt the transition plan for the town of Benson. Once adopted, we will package it, send it to the Department of Justice. The Department of Justice does a review and provides a concurrence if they find that everything has been done appropriately and that it's available to be signed off on. Of course, the ultimate goal of the self-evaluation ADA transition plan is to provide equivalent access to town events, activities, programs, facilities for all residents and visitors regardless of ability. We want everybody to feel welcome and included in Benson, North Carolina. And as of now, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions, Ted?
Ted, you said that most municipalities either adopt a five or a ten-year plan. What was the determination for us going with a five-year plan versus the ten-year?
The main reason is, sadly for the other municipalities, a lot of them have a lot more dollar value repairs than what y'all did. So a lot of times they'll stretch that out over ten just because they have some bigger ticket items.
So you think we've got the funding in place to be able to meet this plan in five years?
Well, I don't know that we'll be able to meet all of it in five years. But we can, a lot of it is minimal stuff. I mean, it is a thirteen-hundred-page document, but a lot of it, like he said, it's like filling in pipes underneath sinks and moving toilet paper dispensers and towels. I mean, a lot of that stuff we can do in-house. When you get to the sidewalk repairs, we have put in for some grant money with DOT on some of our ADA ramps. But I mean, I think we'll be able to get a majority of it done.
What would happen if we go over five years?
It's what they call a living document. Like I mentioned, if you have other major capital projects come up that for some reason just have to be done, then you document why you didn't do something in a specified year.
Is there any kind of penalty or anything?
It's not necessarily a penalty as long as you are showing forward movement and a reason for not making it. The only thing is liability, and that's why everybody's doing this is because of future liability lawsuits or something where if somebody got hurt, you know, anybody can.
But if we decide to do absolutely nothing, from what I understand, there's some big fines that can be brought against the town of Benson because we're not doing anything about it.
I haven't heard about fines, but as I mentioned at the beginning, the DOT, NCDOT does have the option to withhold federal funds, which a lot of people, and it even includes your pile bill money, receives. So I don't know about a fine, but that may come in the future, I've not heard of that, but they can withhold fines.
Is there an increase in our liability by shortening to a five-year if we don't make it versus taking a ten-year and trying to spread it out over a longer period?
I don't think so, as long as you show it appropriately and show that you had good intent, good effort, and forward movement, and you show a reason why you did not, for some reason, meet the five-year goal.
Would y'all feel better if it was a ten-year?
I'm just trying to figure out how much is going, I'm not seeing the thirteen-hundred-page document. I'm trying to figure out how much is it going to cost in five years? Or do we have the funding available to meet it? Give me the, give me the, the quick notes. What, I mean, do we have any idea? I mean, I know that.
We've actually done some of it. And on Main Street and on Peash Drive and some of the other areas as far as handicap sidewalk.
Yeah, we have, but that was before this plan, that was before they did, because y'all were here on site, what month?
July, basically July, August, September.
Yeah.
So you said, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So you said they can hold federal funds and stuff like that. So if we tell them a five-year plan and say in that five years, a hurricane comes through FEMA, those federal funds, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we're not done with it, we're running over, and we get him a letter, but they say, you know what, you committed to a five-year plan, we're holding this federal money until you're done.
Yeah, and I'd...
Can that happen?
Yeah, to my understanding, as long as you implement it, adopt it, the Department of Justice concurs, then that doesn't get you off the hook for not making the federal funds, but it does put you on the preferred list of, you know, you're moving forward, you're showing good intent.
You're showing intent.
So...
My thing is about it, if you, if they offer you five or ten, or you tell them you're doing it five, and they can hope, they can penalize you, there's got to be a penalty somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, and I think...
And I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot saying, we're going to be done in five.
Right.
Yeah, and my, and my understanding is, you don't get penalized as long as you show forward progress and there's a reason that you didn't make it in five.
Yeah.
If a hurricane came through and, you know, all your resources went to the hurricane, I would assume that's a...
Well, it seems to me, ten years versus five years with the cost of everything and everything going up, would make more sense to me to do it, take a five year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then do ten.
Well...
Instead of a ten.
Yeah, well, she said five.
Oh, you're saying five instead of, okay, okay.
I'm saying five instead of ten, because of the cost and the way things are, we don't know how much it's going to be to get what we could do in five years, much cheaper we can get it in two.
And, and the big reason is just, and the big reason is looking at it and seeing, like you said, the low volume or the low-cost items versus high-ticket items.
The high-ticket items, yeah.
What's the average cost to fix a sidewalk entry? Do we have any idea what an, I mean, if we've got a hundred or over a hundred sidewalks, do we have an idea what that average cost is?
Yeah, it's in your bid, oh, do I have that bid packet?
Yeah, I know, I know on average, if you've got a, if you've got to do a full removal and replacement of a curb ramp, it's about two thousand dollars.
So out of a whole, out of this whole project, is there a dollar amount?
I don't know that there's actually been one computed.
No, there's not a dollar amount.
But the sidewalks would be an unknown factor.
We have, I mean, we, you have your own called concrete contract, that's one of the things we're bidding on, I mean, sidewalk ramp is estimated, he's giving us three thousand dollars for a sidewalk ramp, and, and like I said, we've turned in DOT quite a bit of sidewalk areas with ramps that we need to outfit, and it's, if it's DOT, DOT pays for it, if it's town of Benson, it's a fifty-fifty match.
Do we know how many of those were a hundred, or DOT versus town?
Most of them were towns, because, I mean, DOT is...
So if there's a hundred at three thousand, that's three hundred thousand we're committing to in five years? Is that a fair number?
Well, that says a hundred of some sort, some of them, you just need to do the tactile domes, truncated domes, so you wouldn't have a pure...
We're not talking about all the concrete...
Well, that's what I'm saying, so now we're, so are we at five hundred thousand in the next, that means we're spending a hundred thousand dollars in the next five years?
How much the whole plane is going to cost?
There wasn't a cost, that's minimal.
Hey, if you've got something over...
It's not...
Well, generally said, it's three thousand dollars for a ramp, that's a quantity of four to seven hundred fifty dollars.
Oh, there you go, sorry, yep, I was looking at the full amount.
Okay, so seven hundred fifty times a hundred, then, right?
Yeah.
So seventy-five thousand over the next five, that's a little bit more sustainable.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the total.
And as we said, some of these are just, you know, we have a lot of ramps replaced, just may need minor repairs or, you know, tactile surfaces.
And if it's part of that hundred that, you know, we're just, something was found, like I said, it may not be the whole ramp, it may just be a barrier removed away from the ramp, or something like that, then you can show that as part of your plan that it's already been done.
But these are also sidewalks too, it's, we're not talking about just ramps here.
There are some...
We're talking about bathrooms, we're talking about sidewalks that are buckling, that we've got some problems that's been ground down, and now they're back up. Ramps, we're talking about maybe a hundred thousand, all this other, we can just add to it, right?
Yes.
I think my, I just want, I mean, my concern is, probably the same as Dean's, is we know what our budget looks like from our board retreat last week, and I would just want, I don't want to put something out into town, say we're going to commit to five years of spending this fund and then make this plan, and then us not be able to do it, and thus then us having adverse effects if we need federal funding for something else, and thus them saying we're not meeting what we've committed to.
And I think the big, the, the thing to notice is it's a good faith effort, I mean, we're not saying, it is a living document, this document can change as we work through it, I don't think it says you've got to one-hundred percent have this document done in five years. It's showing that we're, we're giving good faith effort to getting such checklists.
Is there an engineering expense every time we change this document, or is if we, so if we go five years and then we have to do a change order, is do we have to get engineers and pay them to do it, or can we go ten years and say, we've got ten years to do this?
Yeah, and what I understand is, once you get close to your five-year goal, you should have a running total of what you've got going on, and you just document it, and when the Department of Justice, Justice asks for an update, you show that, and at that time, if there's been a hurricane and other instances, then that's when you say, oh, by the way, we need three extra years, or we need to move it to a ten-year goal versus five-year.
What would be wrong with asking for ten years and trying to strike and do it in five?
Nothing wrong with that at all, yeah.
Nothing, that's what's, I mean, if y'all want to move it to a ten, that's fine.
I just know, there's got to be some kind of penalty right there to, you know...
Well, I think it's just a peace of mind, you get it done if you've got the budget, you get it done within five years, and you've, you've got the peace of mind done where...
We've got a lot of infrastructure stuff that's going to be done in the next five years, and to lay this on top of it, I think is stretching with it.
We can...
I think ten years is really a way to go.
We can move it to ten, that's fine.
I mean, we can move it to ten and then strive for five or six.
I just don't want it to be, I don't, what I don't want to get is a ten-year document, and we don't start doing anything on it till year six. So we just need to make sure we stay on top of it.
Yeah, I just didn't want to get a five years, and we already know we probably might not meet it in five years.
Right, yeah.
Let me ask the question, now, you say this report you're going to present to us, is this something that we're going to look at?
They've already, they've already got it.
Well, they, they, they probably don't have the thirteen-hundred...
We've got the slideshow.
Yeah, it's up, it's up, it's upstairs in our office.
And say, okay, maybe this five years is a ten, a ten, or maybe, you know...
It, it's in my office, it's thirteen-hundred pages, like I said, a lot of it's pictures and stuff, but I do have it.
We're not thirteen-hundred-page people, but I am a dollar people, I want to know what this five years is looking at, if it's minor stuff, and you say we're going to do seventy-five thousand dollars in the next five years, or a hundred thousand dollars a year for the next five years, I want this board to be prepared to make that decision and that commitment.
And it is, the report itself is about a hundred pages, and then all the backup documentation that we did is the extra.
Yeah.
But can we not table it till the time? And let the guy take a look at it and go with it?
Yeah, we can do it at the next, and I can do it without y'all coming in.
Sure.
Yeah, we can, we can, we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting for y'all to approve.
At the...
But I still don't know that we'll have a fundamental dollar amount, because that report did not give us that, but we can look at it.
I might say, probably best to vote on the ten-year.
I mean, yeah, you could vote on the ten-year, and, and that's fine, too.
That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, let's put it, let's table it, get the report from the young man back there, so what we can do, and then vote on it next time. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that was my motion.
You ready to vote?
Yeah, I do.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. We double it, table it to next meeting.
All right, I appreciate it, and we'll work with Kimberly on getting the ten-year wording in there, and then she can share that with y'all.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ted.
Sure.
Thanks, Ted.
All right, thank y'all.
Any wish, any individual wishing to address the board or ask to provide their name and address for the record, and please come forward, but the ones that's going to be in the public hearing, you don't have to come now. Anyone who wants to come forward and address the board?
Twenty-third, next meeting, yes, sir.
While nobody come forward, we close that and we go into the public hearing. This is for SD twenty twenty-three dash oh-two. I'll call the hearing to order and announce the case, and I'll ask the town attorney to make his instructions.
Thank you, Mayor, my name's Ike Parker, I'm the town's attorney, so for the benefit of the board, although they've done these a few times, and any of y'all that are here to speak or just listen to this, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so it's going to look a lot like court, although they're not any individual judges, the board is, is, is sitting in, in, in situation like a judge in a court proceeding. The, the state law sets forth the specific procedures and rules concerning how the board has to make its decision, the board's discretion is very limited, has to be based on competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record, which means that the board is only going to consider what's being presented tonight by the applicant, town staff, and any party with standing that wants, that is in a position to offer evidence. The general procedure would go where I'll open this up with some remarks and some housekeeping procedural issues with the board, then the town staff would present their presentation and, and their position on the application, then the applicant would have an opportunity to present their application and case, then any party with standing, which we'll get to more in a moment, would have an opportunity to cross-examine any witnesses, then any party with standing who wishes to present any case and rebuttal would have an opportunity to do so, the party, the applicant party would then have an opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses, so again, it's a, it's going to look a lot like court. The, let's see, the, everyone is invited to watch, the parties are going to be limited to who can speak, are going to be limited generally to the applicant, any party with standing, standing is a person with a legal interest in the property, the applicant, of course, the town, or any party who will suffer special damages, that includes those who, due to the proximity effect of their property value or other adverse impacts, would suffer special damages from the approval or denial of the proposed development. That doesn't mean that if you'd like to be heard, generally it is the policy of this board, that even a party without standing may come and make comments, but it is important to limit your comments to factual matters, not general opinion, the board can hear these comments, but again, must base its, its decision tonight on competent, relevant, substantial evidence that's actually presented in the hearing. One also important difference in this than other legislative decisions like a rezoning would be that all witnesses will have to be sworn, you have to provide your name and actually be sworn to give testimony, any expert witness has to be qualified as an expert, so you'll have to go into your background and what qualifies you to offer expert opinion testimony that the board would consider. At this point, are there any questions for me? I, I will say, for those of you who have, intend to have standing, we can get to that generally after the staff presents their presentation on the proposed development, preliminarily before you cross-examine witnesses or offer any kind of testimony, we would go into a general set of questions, I would question you on your particular adverse effects that this property may cause to you if you intend to act as a party. If you just want to get up and speak, that's fine, again, try to limit your comments to actual factual testimony that you can provide based on your knowledge of the property or the area surrounding it. At this point, it's proper that we ask if there are any conflicts with the board, if there's any bias, ex parte communication that any of the board members have that they need to disclose or consider being recused for the consideration of the proposed development.
So here you... We now will, are you finished?
I am, I would say, when Ms. Joseph gets done, any witnesses that would come, again, we would go ahead and swear you in as you come up, the applicant will get an opportunity to go first, if you have standing, is there, well, let me just ask you at this point, is there any party here either adverse to the proposed development or in favor of it, other than the applicant, that would claim to have standing and want to offer evidence? Witnesses or any kind of evidence? Okay. If you do, at a later point, we can address that during the hearing, but it's good to ask ahead of time, because we can go ahead and get into that and go in and have you sworn in. That's all I've got.
I will call on Erin Joseph to come forward, and I'm going to ask Angie to swear her in.
Erin Joseph, three oh-three East Church Street, Benson, and that's my office address. All right, so, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. I would like to present my staff report and presentation for this request, preliminary plat residential subdivision located on Searl's Road in our...
Can everybody in the back here?
Can you hear better?
Turn this up so that, well, she needs to get right.
Can you hear me better now in the back? Okay, excellent, all right, I'll speak more into the microphone. So this request is for the subdivision of sixty-two acres between two parcels located on Searl's Road, located in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, the site is located right off of NC Highway fifty south, it's about a half a mile from NC fifty south on one end, and then the, on the other end of Searl's Road is NC two forty-two south. The applicant has requested to create twenty-two lots on the two tracks in question, there are three owners for the projects, property, current property owners, J.B. Parker Ayers, Judy K. Bradshaw, and Marty S. Parker. The land is currently vacant, it has been used for agricultural purposes in the past, and the zoning is residential agriculture, that's our low-density residential district in the town of Benson. The utilities would be provided by Johnston County's Utilities, as well as environmental health permitting for onsite septic, and electricity would be provided by South River EMC. Now, the surrounding, and just give you a little bit of kind of an area, aerial view of the area, so at the top of the screen, you have Phase Two, twenty-eight lots, last year, the board approved the Phase One of Searl's Road development for thirty-nine lots, and the project is adjacent to Johnston County's jurisdictional border and the town of Benson's border, so you have one lot over from Phase One, where Johnston County approved a subdivision of sixteen lots, and then you have further down, just below Beasley Estates, where it was approved this year in Johnston County for nineteen lots, and so predominantly the uses in the area are single-family residential and agricultural land, pasture land and crop farming. So this is the plat that has been presented, and you do have it in your application packet, and I would like to actually make, request a motion to enter the application and the supporting documents into the record, please.
I'll entertain a motion to put this in the record.
I made a motion.
All in favor, say aye. Close, no, ayes have it, it's been put in the record.
Thank you. And so you can see on the screen there, Phase One, thirty-nine lots, there's a street that takes you into Phase Two, and so you have two streets that incorporates Phase Two. The plat was reviewed by Johnston County Stormwater Sedimentation and Erosion Control, Environmental Health, as well as NC DOT, and the town of Benson's Planning Department, and town of Benson's Fire Department. The minimum lot size in this area, in this zoning district, is thirty thousand square feet, which the, all of the lots are at least thirty thousand square feet or greater. Only one access point is required for our Unified Development Ordinance. Only one access point is required for our Unified Development Ordinance. They have provided some open space. There may be an opportunity to provide more open space or a fee in lieu of the open space, which our ordinance allows. And the project is consistent with our comprehensive land use plan, as well as our future land use map. You'll see on the screen where it shows the property and the surrounding zoning district is all residential agriculture and single-family uses, as well as on the future land use map has identified this area as suitable for residential, single-family development. And as we've discussed a little bit beforehand with Ike, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. You'll be looking at specific findings of fact. There are four, four preliminary plat approvals or major subdivision approvals. And so you want to keep those in mind, those four, consistency with adopted plans and policies of the town. The subdivision meets all required specifications of this chapter. The subdivision will not be detrimental to the use or orderly development of other properties in the surrounding area, and will not violate the character of existing standards for development of properties in the surrounding area. The subdivision will provide for the distribution of traffic in a manner that will avoid or mitigate congestion within the immediate area, and will provide for the unified and orderly use of or extension of public infrastructure, and will not materially endanger the environment, public health, safety, or the general welfare. The applicant did conduct a neighborhood meeting in accordance with the Unified Development Code. It was held on February sixteenth, and you also have that information, the minutes and sign-in sheet from that neighborhood meeting. You also have the TRC comments from planning, fire, NC DOT, and stormwater and sedimentation. To date, I did not receive any comments back from environmental health or Johnston County Utilities. NC DOT, they are just requesting that their permit for Phase One be modified to accommodate the additional lots of Phase Two. And there's standard comments from sedimentation and erosion control requiring buffer calls, and if the site is greater than fifteen percent impervious, to include stormwater management facilities. The applicant has also submitted waivers to two of our standards in the development code, a request to waive the sidewalk requirement, as well as to allow the cul-de-sac street to exceed one thousand feet in length. That is my staff report. The planning board did review this and recommended approval. Staff recommends approval contingent that the plat, construction drawings are approved and pulls the proper permits. I've also added a request for a landscape buffer, just on the backside of the lots, for the existing lots that are, I believe it's fifty-three through fifty-seven, just to have that buffer, additional buffering between the existing lots and the new lots. That's all I have for you all.
Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The applicant is going to be called now to present their case, and at this point, no questions from the Commissioners, so let them make their case, and then we'll get into deliberation down the road. Thank you.
And just, because I know Mr. Burl's an attorney, attorneys do not need to be sworn, obviously.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I am Marcus Burl, Hewitt Law Group, 101 Blackstone Lane in Selma, North Carolina. Represent the applicant on this and working with the developer. And as Ms. Joseph said, we are seeking approval of the preliminary plat for Phase Two of this subdivision. Phase One was approved towards the end of last year. We will be seeking to add twenty-eight additional lots to this subdivision. And just a reminder, the preliminary plat, it's very early on, so what is required is consistency with your policies, with your code of ordinance, with the unified development plans. So what we have for you tonight is Mr. Jonathan Barnes with Dalton Engineering, and I will call him now as my witness to go through the findings of fact and answer any questions that you may have, that you can answer these findings of fact affirmatively and approve this preliminary plat for the subdivision. So I'd call Jonathan Barnes with Dalton Engineering at this time.
Come forward. Erin, I mean, Ms. Thornton.
Hey.
Hey.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, then state your name and address for the record.
Name is Jonathan Barnes. Four-four-six East Main Street, Clayton, North Carolina.
Mr. Barnes, what is your profession?
Project manager, Dalton Engineering and Associates.
How long have you worked with Dalton Engineering?
Twenty-two years.
And in those twenty-two years, how many subdivisions have you developed? Drawn out as project managers, not physically developed, I'm sorry.
A few dozen.
With this subdivision, with Phase Two, what is the property currently zoned for the Town of Benson?
To my knowledge, RA.
And we're seeking to put single-family residences there, correct?
That is correct.
And they will meet minimum lot size, building setbacks, any requirements that the Town of Benson has in their code of ordinances?
That is correct.
Ms. Joseph spoke of a landscape buffer along some of those lots. Have you had a chance to talk with the developer about that proposed buffer?
Our office has, and the developer is in agreement with that condition.
And I think you mentioned this before, and just to make sure that the council knows and understands, everything with this project, the application, the submittal of the plan, everything has been in, has been consistent with the town's code of ordinances and the unified development ordinance?
That is correct.
Ms. Joseph mentioned a waiver, especially the cul-de-sac, one of the links to the cul-de-sac. Can you let the council know why that's necessary for this subdivision?
We are showing Street D, which is on the layout sheet that's been provided. It's approximately eighteen hundred feet in length, and that length is due to gain access to the rear of the project.
And once the preliminary plat is approved, you still have to go through permit process with the county, including stormwater provisions, correct?
That is correct.
And you have to abide by all requirements of the county for stormwater, as well as utilities and environmental health, correct?
That is correct.
With the adjacent property, we've talked about this as Phase Two, so we know that one of the adjacent properties is Phase One. What is the surrounding other parcels around this proposed subdivision? Is there anything located on these parcels, whether they make Atlantic or not?
To my knowledge, I'm not exactly sure. Some, I'm assuming some may have, some are occupied, some may be vacant.
And in the area as a whole, mostly either agricultural or single-family residents?
To my knowledge, yes, sir.
So building more single-family residents would fit in with the character of the surrounding areas?
In my opinion, yes.
With traffic, one of the things that we need to look at is traffic patterns. You have, currently have one entrance to this subdivision, correct?
That is correct.
And is that what required by the Town of Benson, NC DOT, at this time?
That meets the town's mental and design standards.
Do you also have a spur going out the back of Phase Two that could be connected to another entrance at a future time, if necessary, correct?
That is correct. If that property is ever developed, there appears to be enough room to extend the street to gain access to that property.
Ms. Joseph said all of these houses will be connected to septic systems, correct?
That is correct.
And nothing with Town of Benson sewer, Johnston County sewer, it's all septic through Johnston County Environmental Health, correct?
That is correct.
And you'll have to abide by all of their requirements and permitting process?
Yes, sir.
I have nothing further to ask of you, Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Burl, I would think, just for the sake of the board's record-
Sure.
-you may want to tender him as an expert witness. I think he qualified himself adequately, but let the board vote on that for the record.
Sure. Based upon Mr. Barnes's education in engineering and over twenty years of experience, I would tender him an expert for civil engineering with developing subdivisions.
I will entertain a motion to approve him as an expert.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Close no. Ayes have it. This will be-
And based upon your experience, one additional question. Based upon your experience through your work history, would the development of this subdivision have any adverse effects on the surrounding areas?
No, sir.
Thank you.
If there's any cross-examination, again, this would get back into the issue of standing initially, but I'm sort of calling again just to give everybody who might have a desire to, to cross-examine Mr. Barnes. You would need to have standing to do that. Is there anyone that would wish to establish that and ask questions of the engineer?
If not, you choose.
Okay. Thank you, board.
Anyone else wants to come forward in favor of this? Anyone else wants to come forward in favor of this?
And we have nothing further from that with it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Therefore, we'll go forward for testimony from opposition if there is any. Those wishing to speak, come forward now, and you'll be sworn. Anyone who wants to speak, opposed, come forward now. There's still no questions to come from the Commissioners. No one coming forward? We now ask for applicants' rebuttal. You can speak at this time.
Or do you, would you like?
No rebuttal.
Can the board speak at this time, or?
Just about to.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, just about.
Yeah, I thought he had just, all right.
So we're at Commissioners' Inquirer, so you can talk amongst yourselves now.
This would be the point, if you wanted to ask specific questions of any witness that's been tendered, there's only been the one or the applicant. If there's any other questions you have, I'd say just now's the time to ask them of any party, or just in general. Generally, in these hearings in the past, granted, there's been a more, a higher volume of witnesses, and so there's been more back and forth. I know nobody's complaining that we're not later into the evening with these processes, which can go durational, but you'll have an opportunity to just, once the evidentiary hearing portion of the hearing is closed, which is not yet, to debate and deliberate. Now is really just more of a time for this board and yourselves to ask questions.
I've got a question for Aaron. Can I call Aaron back up?
Sure, absolutely.
Aaron, this applicant has asked for two waivers in the packet that you sent for us. One is for the sidewalks, which I've seen before. The other one is, what I understand, is the stubout to the cul-de-sac. I assume it's the street going around the pond to go back to reach the back lots. I think the engineer mentioned that was an eighteen-hundred-foot street. Can you tell me what our current UDO requirement is, and give me an idea of why we have concluded that to be our requirement in the past?
Right now, on a residential cul-de-sac, the maximum length is called out as one thousand square feet if the lots being served are greater than twenty thousand square feet. So that's where that rule comes in. I don't have a really good answer as to why we chose a thousand in length. Fire usually gets involved with that as well, with street lengths and street widths and the access and getting emergency vehicles in and out. And so, to my knowledge, that conversation about street lengths has always been about emergency services, access, and hydrant placement, and just the access in and out of that, that development. But why one thousand feet in length was the chosen number, I don't know what the history behind that is.
Can I phone a friend and ask the fire chief to come up and answer that? He's been here a long time, maybe he has an answer for that.
Don't go nowhere.
Alan, I have a question. The chief will have to be sworn.
You have to swear him in. You gotta swear him in. Or you gotta swear him in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? State your name and address.
Helen Johnson, three thirteenth South Hill Street. As Aaron said, that's my office, yep.
Chief, I'm going to ask you the same question. You've been here a while, and I know that you look at these plans thoroughly, so have you got any kind of response as to the reason why we've always reduced it to a thousand square foot length on the streets?
I have no idea. I mean, that's what it's been ever since I've been here. And then several times in the past, anything that's been longer than that has always got a waiver, or there's never been an issue with a waiver, to my knowledge. But I have no idea what a thousand foot, and in the fire code book, it does specify the length of streets and road widths and things like that, but there's no issue.
Alan, in looking at this, and we've looked over it, and I know you've looked over it, do you see any, any problems with this cul-de-sac? It looks like eighteen hundred, and you know, we have to respond to it, and there's some cul-de-sacs that are not cul-de-sacs. Is it done the right way?
Yes.
Is the cul-de-sac large enough for us to get a truck in and out of it?
Correct, yes. We've met with Mr. Barnes, and Aaron, we met and talked about it, but a ninety-six-foot is what the fire code book references to, a cul-de-sac, within, you know, within our jurisdiction, or the town limits, or DTJ, and that, indeed, that's what they're showing, the ninety-six-foot cul-de-sac.
And is the eighteen hundred from the road the first cul-de-sac, or is that the cul-de-sac off the first cul-de-sac, all the way over and around, as far as the diagram comes up?
I've not measured it, but I would assume it would be mostly all the way back to the back.
Well, both of them are really all the way back to the back. One of them is on the opposite side of the pond.
One's closer, but I'd say the one on the opposite side of the pond would be the furthest.
Would be the eighteen hundred?
And with the ninety-six-foot cul-de-sac, that gives you room to get in. Now, we've got a lot of cul-de-sacs around that's not that, especially in our, it's not in our ETJ.
And also, the road width?
Twenty foot.
Would this be hydrated to the county?
Yes.
All the way down that eighteen-hundred-foot street?
Yeah, we've done hydrant placement and everything, yes, sir.
How about the thousand foot came at one time with the UDO way back because of the hydrant space?
I really, really don't know.
The thousand that we came, or that they had come up with?
I mean, as long as you, to my opinion, if you call it the expert one or not, but I mean, as long as you, to my opinion, if you call it the expert one or not, but as long as you've got a good road and a good way to turn around and go in, come out, I don't see where the length matters. Again, that's just my opinion.
Question is, is it okay the way it is?
Absolu- absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Alan.
Yes, sir.
Any other inquiry from the commission?
Yeah, I got a question for you. At what what how many houses does it trigger for there to be another in- entrance?
Seventy-five.
So does that account say if there's a phase three to this? Is that just for the pl- plan for phase three or is that include one, two, and three?
We would look at the totality of the of the um project and and we will we will if it has, if phase three um comes along, let's say this future portion is developed, you're more than likely going to trigger that seventy-five lot potentially, just depending on the design of it. Um, and then you're going to have that second access required. When it hits seventy-five, you have to have two access points. There cannot be a stub street. You can have a three, a third access that's a stub street, but not the first two have to be access points.
I just wanted to make sure if there was a phase three, that phase one and two is also counted.
Yeah, we're gonna look at the whole project.
Any other questions of the board of anybody?
I'm in.
Any questions?
I'm ready to go.
All right, we'll go into deliberations, so it's up to, uh, the board to talk amongst themselves.
I don't.
Nothing to say?
I don't have.
Okay.
I've had my my questions answered.
Let her take a motion.
And I'll make that motion to me and and I want Mr. Joseph up here. I was looking to see if you had put it in my notes 'cause I never do have it. And you know I can't see that way.
Yeah, and what we've done in the past, just so we're clear for the record, is we look like to look at each finding, discuss or deliberate and vote on each one individually and then um make one motion for the entire approval as well as with this scenario granting of the waivers or not.
Okay, so you're gonna put each motion?
Um, well, have them on there. I don't have them individually, but they are in your packet. So the first one is consistency with the adopted plans and policies of the town. You can deliberate that and decide and vote amongst yourselves if if you make a motion that it is consistent with the adopted plans and policy. Just go through the four, discuss and and.
I don't want to be presumptuous here either, but Commissioner Rayner actually brought up a good point from a previous application and uh, uh, project. But there's not really been any opposition and there's not been any evidence offered in opposition. That means the applicant's made a prima facie case that this does satisfy those requirements. I don't, again, want to presume that that's what y'all are contemplating doing right now, but just bear that in mind when you vote.
That's why I have my motion on the floor. All right.
We're gonna take them one at a time.
When I have.
Okay, will you will you read, uh, for us?
Yes, consistency with the adopted plans and policies of the town is finding a fat one.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we.
That it is consistent.
All in favor say aye.
The su- the subdivision meets all requirement, all required specifications of this chapter.
I'll make a motion that it reads all the comments. All in favor say aye. No, number three.
The subdivision will not be detrimental to the use or orderly development of other properties in the surrounding area and will not violate the character of existing standards for uh for development of properties in the surrounding area.
I'll make a motion that we approve the finding.
All in favor say aye.
All righty, and number four, the the subdivision design will provide for the distribution of traffic in a manner that will avoid or mitigate congestion within the immediate area, will provide for the unified and orderly use of or extension of public infrastructure and will not materially endanger the environment, public health, safety, or the general welfare.
I make a motion that we approve the findings.
All in favor say aye. No, no.
Okay, so then, uh, the last, and do you all want to address the waivers and make a motion for that separately as well? That approve them, do you approve the
Which one?
The waivers, the two waivers, the omission of the sidewalks and the.
I make a motion that we approve based on the waiver of the sidewalks and the waiver of the eighteen hundred foot cul-de-sac.
Any questions about that? All in favor say aye. No.
All right, and then the last, tidy it all up. The board hereby determines based upon the evidence that all findings of fact have been met and approved S D twenty twenty-three dash oh two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor say aye. No. S D twenty twenty-three dash oh two is approved.
Thank you.
I got a question since we're out of this right now. Why can't we just vote on that that saying right there?
Well, for the record, you really, especially if it's ever appealed, you want to make sure that on the record that you have considered and deliberated each finding and it there wasn't, you know, a lot of evidence or back and forth this evening, but there's a record that you considered each one based on the evidence presented. And that's why you want to do that, just for the record in case you ever have an appeal and you have that.
Aaron's exactly right. This one might have been a little bit of a softball for y'all because we're all experts now after one in particular, but several of these that we've done, but um, it's good to go through the motions of in.
I just guess when you voted all four of them, approving all four of them.
If there was a.
We've had a case where we, there was only one that was voted against and it it caused the whole thing to fail.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, right.
Right, so if one fails, then the entire project fails based on our ordinance, so.
Right.
Thank you.
I have a question about process. Uh, you know, I I thought this was slam dunk, like I say, a softball. But, you know, the times it is not being, I've not not being a lawyer. I've had a problem with, uh, not letting people speak and people are not experts and this experts and I just wonder, I just, I'm not suggesting, I'm just asking. Do we need a traffic expert on hire and an engineer on hire to to lead, or is that always the duty of the opposing?
It's not, it's it's not their duty, like a legal responsibility that they provide that. If it's something they want to argue and in rebuttal to the applicant's case and say, you are gonna cause traffic problems, you are gonna cause uh, stormwater problems, you are gonna cause whatever problem, then the onus is on them. The burdens are, the burdens on the applicant to show that it satisfies those four things that y'all voted on just now. If they show that, then the burden switches to the the any party that's sort of the defendant in in this, you know, quasi judicial scenario to disprove that. And then for you to beat that around back and forth and decide who you agree with or somewhere in the middle. So would it be, it wouldn't be improper for the town to have that and it would uh maybe alleviate some burden. But just like Aaron comes and offers expert opinion, uh, on zoning and planning regulation. Uh, and, uh, you know, we could have someone that we retain or I don't know if it would be somebody in house, but it really retained to come and offer evidence on that. And then the parties would be not be prejudiced by that because they'd have an opportunity to cross examine, just like we have in the past where parties will ask Aaron questions, right? And they'll can cross examine Aaron and ask her for quality questions. So I don't think it's a bad idea, uh, but we don't have a duty to do it. No one really has a duty to do it. It's just if if you are in a position where you want to try to have this board deny an application based on something like traffic say, you're gonna have to offer up that substantial competent relevant evidence for y'all to question the the traffic or whatever the particular problem would be.
That's what I was thinking about. And the problem I have is we also ask this question in prior ones. Uh, what if a traffic expert that is allowed to speak where the regular people that live in the neighborhood are not allowed to speak says there's no traffic problem and there is? Is he liable? And the answer I heard is he's not liable.
No, he's not. He's not liable to any property owner or to the town or any party to the to the project that as to his rendering of that opinion. Uh, and of course, as long as as long as it was, he can justify it or defend it. I'm not saying someone couldn't try to sue him. Um, now, property owners can testify about traffic. Right? But if you, and and there's no hard and fast test about who can, who has standing. And remember, there's a difference between just somebody coming and speaking, which I I may try to make that clear. You can come speak. Some boards don't let you speak and don't let you present anything if you don't have standing as a party. Other boards might just let everybody talk and, you know, then you hope that you sift through that into the competent relevant evidence only. Because if somebody comes up and says, well, I live a mile away, but I just love how it's very uh, green and bucolic and pretty farmland and I just wish it would stay like that. Well, that's just an opinion and it's really not relevant to anything. This board generally takes a more permissive approach, has in the past. You can come speak if you are just somebody in opposition or for it, but unless you have property is borders, that's one uh, situation where you would think that person can clearly demonstrate a proximity and would probably suffer some sort of economic harm if they can demonstrate it. Uh, somebody who is maybe downstream and would make arguments about stormwater, um, you know, but but parties who live in the area. Because what they can testify to, even if they don't go get some expert traffic, uh, person or engineer or something, is, hey, I live on that street. I live on that road and, you know, there's there's transfer trucks coming and going because there's something down the road where they're, you know, logging it or something and you know, I I almost saw a child almost got ran over last week. They can testify to that and it's germane. It's important and you can consider it. It's what we don't want is, again, the person whose property really is not in the vicinity and just wants to give you opinions. Well, you know this is gonna, you this is gonna make traffic bad, Max, and you know it will. Well, that's not, is he certainly not acting as an expert and he's not, he or she's not really giving you any factual testimony like somebody who says, look, I live across the street and I can tell you what I see every day.
You know, the example, that reminds me of the example that that I really think that maybe worry about this a little bit or think about this is, you know, one of the ones we did recently was actually the person that testified was a person in the legal profession who lived in that neighborhood who said that his yard had flooded anyway and these these twenty-five lots were gonna make it flood more. And they told him, you're not an engineer, you don't have, you know, how you build.
Yeah, a lawyer did.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's, remember, this is quasi judicial. This is like court and that's that's what a lawyer, that's what attorney's gonna do.
A lawyer can say anything, but do we have to go by that?
No. You can say, well, I listen, I heard what he testified to and I I give it certain weight. You're really, you're really kind of getting into the specifics and the and the and the finer details of the of the matter here, but if, let's say in that scenario, you denied it because you believed by the greater weight of evidence was with the testimony of that person who says, I live there and I know the water's gonna be bad. If the applicant appealed it, that would be one of the reasons they would say you based that on evidence that wasn't as sound as what I was offering you, which was an engineer who's an expert, right? You should have listened to him and not to this guy given, uh, lay evidence of an existing water issue. But now I don't know what would happen on appeal there because neither one of those positions or 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 um foundations for this board to take would necessarily be wrong. Because a a person testifying as the traffic they see is just a as relevant and competent evidence as a traffic engineer testifying is the studies that they've done.
Is it is it kosher to, uh, ask a traffic expert? How many of these have you denied? How many of these have you said didn't qualify and how many have you said that did? Can you give us, can you provide us with information on what you, for this this lawyer you're working for or this group you're working for? How many have you said no to and how many have you said yes to?
It is is not an improper question to ask, but I would caution you, remember, you sit as the judge, like the man or the lady in the robes, sitting up there on the bench and your not position is not to lean on the scale one way or the other. So if you want to ask questions like that, that's fine, but if a party is serious about challenging a proposed development, that's where they need to have hire their own lawyer who would then ask that question of a witness. Well, you know, how many of these have you done? You know, well, aren't you being paid? Another germane question is, well, aren't you being paid by the applicant? Well, yeah, I've been, I've given an honest testimony. Well, it may be, but the honest truth of it is you're also being paid by the person who's wanting this.
What we've been given is is what we're going by and it's not something we made up. It's something that the court, that legislature made up. And, yeah, we might slip off the line once in a while, but but we have to treat it like a case in court.
But, you know, I worry that I personally, I can't speak for everybody else. I personally think that because I don't know the nuances of what I can ask and what I can't ask in legal in legal way, sometimes we don't ask.
If you want to ask a question and you're concerned about the way it's gonna, maybe it would be an improper question or something. First of all, if you go ahead and ask it and it's something you just can't, and I don't want to sit here and waste all today's evening trying to think of the the example, I'll tell you. I won't do it to embarrass you, but I'll tell all of you right now, right this second. I will tell you, I don't think that's a proper question to ask at this time, or I might come over to where you're sitting and tell you, maybe ask you what you're wanting to ask. Generally, though, anything's fair game to ask of the of the witnesses or the parties, right? If they've come and offered testimony, you can inquire as to the things that they, uh, and if you have serious concerns about something somebody said or their motivations behind it, you have an ability to inquire into those matters, right? You you are not doing anything improper in doing that.
Can I add one thing as well to?
Let's let's close the public hearing.
Okay.
I thought we were closing.
It's closed.
We did.
All business, street assessment, Jay Murray.
I was just gonna add to Commissioner Rayner, that this is where the Unified Development Code comes in very important because certain things we can require in our ordinance. So right now, a traffic impact analysis, there's a a trigger, one hundred lots that would require a an engineer to do a traffic impact analysis. Shameless plug, we have our workshop on Thursday, um, that's discussing our development code. Um, and so do we want to keep it at a hundred? Do we want to say all subdivisions have to have uh, a a traffic impact analysis done? So those are things that we can look at in our code. Why is the the street length one thousand um feet in length? So those are the things. So please, Thursday, March sixteenth at eleven to to one and then four to six, we'll be discussing all you want of the development code and what's required and not required or there.
If you have any questions, ask me or Aaron about it. We'd be happy to talk more about it.
Jay?
Yep.
Just advance one and you should be up.
What is it?
Um, well, I think you're backwards on there, but this one is the street assessment.
This is the paving.
Yeah, it's the street assessment. I think you, it's in the back of your PowerPoint, isn't it?
You want to do this first?
Uh, no, paving is new business. You're in old business.
Okay. Oh, that, no, that's a hot block. That's all farther we go. Okay. That's all?
Yep.
Okay.
Your assessment that we just came up with and then go into your street paving.
Okay, here we go. Um, at the request of the board of last month, I believe, uh, we talked about doing some pothole repair work. So I contacted some contractors to give us some, uh, pricing to do some work. So I picked out North Fayetteville Street, South McLemone and South Johnston. I went out and walked all the streets, uh, measured all the potholes, the repair work that would need to be done. And I took photographs, sent them to each one contractor and I had three bids come back to do the work. And that's just a listing of, I don't know why I put that in there. It's just a listing of the potholes and the sizes and the locations where they're at on our little map here. Uh, they're all pretty close together. I tried to keep them close together so we wouldn't have mobilization costs too much on them. And this was a pricing that we got from them and I can't even read what it says. But, uh, pool paving came back with eighty-three hundred dollars to do the work. And this is to clean up the pothole itself, uh, to put the hot pack in it and the hot patch, which is a hot asphalt. You compact it down. It's supposed to be a permanent fix. And between that, A S D was twenty-six thousand, Daniels Garner was twenty thousand eight hundred fifty. So, uh, pool paving came back with a real good price. I contacted them and they confirmed that they were good with the price.
So the streets that are in the pothole patching costs that you just showed us are not included in the upcoming paving cost? Because these are streets that are gonna be affected by our infrastructure change. Is that correct?
That is mostly correct.
Okay.
The, the ones we chose to do the paving work on were just streets that, you know, they're intersected, they were close together. I say, well, okay, let's go ahead and get these done. Uh, there's a couple of these that may have some infrastructure issues, but.
And we currently have, what, about $500,000 in our paving budget? Is that correct?
We've gotta make the transfer from last year, but we'll do that yet.
Yeah, so, so you need a motion for $8,000?
This can come out of the old, sorry, for people online.
This can come out of our old paving project that we still have money left in. It's, it's like, what a 13 or 14,000 dollars. So this is not even gonna affect the money that we've been putting back for the last two years.
And I made a motion that we accept a bid in $8,350 or whatever, that's what it was, right?
Before we do that, Jay.
Yes, sir.
I mean, there's a lot of money between 8,000 and 20,000.
Correct.
Okay, what kind of rapport has, uh, the company got?
Uh, for pool paving, I have, uh, had them bid. They're actually one of the concrete bidders and they paved on the main, uh, uh, bid on the paving project as well. I've had good rapport with them. They've been very responsive. Anytime I had a questions, uh, they've been answered the phone and, you know, get right back to me.
How about their, how about their previous work though? We've never used them.
No, we've never used them. I've never seen any documentation that the town's ever used them.
Okay, seen any documentation where they have been used by any other municipality before?
I.
Brand new where they're gonna come in here with a dump truck and, and do their thing?
I do not know if they've ever worked for another municipality. I can find this information out for you very easily.
I hadn't heard of some of the big ones.
There are smaller.
Come in and start it and then do a change order, anything like that to, and get more money out of it?
I think they get a change order, they would have to go through Jay and give a valid reason why they needed a change order.
Okay, cause. I would wheel. I mean, the other two are kinda in line when you're bidding, you know, but 8,000 to 20,000?
Unless they own their own, uh, asphalt company. Asphalt's asphalt. Most of them run the same thing, but.
Yes.
I mean, 8,000 versus 20, I know you questioned them again to make sure that they were.
Mm-hmm.
Bidding on the very same thing, but, uh.
I.
I, I would really like to know if they've done any work locally and, uh, if anybody else had any problems with it? Or, uh, if they were just great.
Okay, I can definitely get you the answers.
Um, also give them your assessment on the, um, hot patch machine. That's in there as well.
Yes, uh, we also, uh, talked about doing a, well, where's it at now? Getting a hot patch machine. This was one of the other options we wanted to consider, uh, uh, from the, uh, meeting last month. There's, this example is what they look like. They, the tops open and you dump the asphalt inside of them. They have burners where you can keep the asphalt viable for at least two days before you use it. Or you can shut it down and, uh, reheat it a week later to, to use. Uh, they're pulled behind a truck. We would, you have to use one of our larger trucks to pull the thing. Cause once you have the asphalt and the trailer itself, they totally come out about 14,000 pounds. They're a heavy machine. But the good thing about it is, especially in this previous picture I showed you, it's a low loading ramp. So the guys will not have to get up into a dump truck like this to get the asphalt out. It's really low. Plus it tilts back too, so they can unload it as that. So I inquired and got pricing on five, uh, five different companies. Again, if, uh, all of them are very responsive and they're all pretty well similarly priced. We have one here at 55,100 from, uh, JFW Equipment throughout Clayton. And, uh, Jetback is 58,000, same thing with Infra, uh, Infrastructure Group. And we have a couple of 66,000s. Only one company so far has contacted me about renting the equipment that they offer for rent. And the, the pricing's here today, uh, 500, $1,900, even less than $2,000 a week. So that's what we're looking at for a hot patch machine if we, the town should desire to get one.
And if we went that route, do we have to have employees, new employees to operate it?
Well, I was gonna say, we've talked with Jeremy about it and I don't think he's very, very comfortable with doing a hot patch machine. Just because we don't have the staff to do it. So the, the better option at this point is to have somebody come in and do the, the bad potholes for us.
liabilities to this too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the, the pricing does include training for, you know, anybody we wish to operate it. But Les Kim said, and I've talked to Jeremy about this as well, and his main concern was that I, I just don't have the manpower to run it right now.
Yeah.
Uh, the company he has been using to do the emergency repairs, it seems to be pretty responsive. So this was something we want to look at and here it is.
Have you ever used one in your previous work?
No, sir.
Okay.
Garner has one, but I don't know what.
Uh, law, yeah, Garner has one, but the municipalities, I've talked to Irwin, Dunn and Smithfield and none of them have one. Lillington, I even talked to Lillington. They don't have one.
So what was your recommendation on the paving?
Uh, my recommendation is this is something.
That's, that's the, on the paving? That's new business. That's next.
No, 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 on the back. On those bids, what was your recommendation?
You have a motion, I have a motion.
I've got a motion on the floor.
Oh, that was for potholes.
That's right.
Yeah.
Was that your recommendation to move forward with pool paving?
It was, yes.
If there's a motion on the floor, move forward with pool paving.
Gotcha, okay.
It's a motion.
Read your motion.
I made the motion that we approve the bid from pool paving for $8,350 to move forward with the pothole repair.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both no.
No. Without some checking on them.
They've been in business since 1980.
What kind of business?
Paving.
Paving. They're out of Willow Springs.
Okay.
All right.
New business?
Move on.
All right, new business, uh, 2023 paving information. We got our bids back on, uh, Friday, December 3rd, I believe that's what it was. For the paving of the streets that we put out for bid is West Woodall Street and South Farmer Drive with an alternate of West Prenter, North and South Ellis Drives and West Lambert Street. Well, West Lambert Drive, excuse me, I apologize. And again, here's our map just showing, we tried to keep our streets centrally located to keep down mobilization costs. And these were the prices we got back from them. Asphalt Services On Demand was, uh, 300, I got this from, I'm gonna go. Asphalt Services On Demand was, uh, 389,000 dollars, 389,982. Uh, Pool Paving, uh, previous company's gonna do our pothole workforce is at 233-379-44. Johnson Brothers bid at 336-027-40. Uh, Estee Wooton bid at 303-427-32. And the lowest bid we got was from Daniels Incorporated of Garner's of 194-717, which is cheaper than what I'd estimated previously on the last meeting. And.
Is that Daniels of Garner off of Highway 70, right there between 70 and Clayton?
That sounds about, yeah, they are off Highway 70, by that, uh, western sewer.
Okay.
And I, the, one of the biggest, um, differences between Daniel, um, and the others was the alternate. Um, their alternate was right at 40,000, where the highest one was Johnson Brothers at 123. And I actually talked to a representative from Johnson Brothers right after the bid was done. And he said that Daniels had much smaller equipment that could get in and out of those alleyways better than Johnson could. And that was why Johnson had bid that so high. So that gives you kind of an idea. But we have talked with people that have, um, are working with, with Daniels right now. Or I've talked with, with some folks that are working with Daniels right now and they said they're doing a phenomenal job, so.
And this 197,000 dollar figure is paving streets that will not be touched during infrastructure. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I made the motion, we approved the, uh, bid from Daniels of Garner for 197-717. Is that 15, 15?
15.
I gotta see eye doctor, 15.
You're making that pretty small.
Any other discussion?
Tim, you've talked with them. You know their background.
I have talked with some people using them, yes, yes.
I believe they're paving in, uh, Smithfield and, uh, Chapel Hill too.
And Clinton, yep.
I'm surprised you got Estee Wooton to bid on it.
I know I was too, but they bid it high. I mean.
I'm, I'm just shocked that they bid it.
Yeah, yeah, which they, they.
They're all bigger stuff.
Yeah, but they have usually bid our streets for us.
Well.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both no. Okay, you're doing a good job, young man.
That's right, concrete. Let's talk concrete.
I got concrete if you want.
Okay, you wanna do that?
I can do that for you.
Well, I, I'm, I'm right here.
On call.
He's on roll.
On call, concrete, uh, we had one bidder previously on March 3rd, so we had to advertise for another week. Uh, and came back in and the second, uh, what was that? That would be the 10th?
10th.
Okay, Friday the 10th, we had two bidders. None of them came to the bid, bid opening, but it was Denning Contracting Company and, uh, aforementioned Pool Paving and Striping submit a price to do the work as well. And after looking at the pricing, they were somewhat similar. Pool Paving was at 94, 425 and Denning Contracting Company was 63, 525. It's about 30,000, 31,000 dollar difference between the two companies.
And, and remember, we came to the board in December and the bids were 53% higher, um, than what we're used to. So I asked the board to reject and let us go back out, which is what we did. Um, just to kinda give you guys an idea, um, Denning is who had our contract before. Um, he started out in 2020 at 58,350. We did a two-year renewal at 5% with him. So in 2022, his amount was 64,330. The bid he gave us at 63,525 is actually less than what we paid him last year. But also keep in mind that this is only if needed. So it's good to have them on tap if we ever need something emergent done. We've already gone through the bid process. If a hurricane comes through, we need to use them for anything like that, the, the bid process is done. That's why we do this. This contract does call for a two-year renewal period with a 5% increase if he needs it. So we'll go back to him in October and, and negotiate a, a renewal if everything's working out. But we've used him for three years and he does a great job and he's local.
I made the motion, we approve the bid from Denning Contracting for 63,525.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Both no. All right. Angie?
Okay. Um, at the end of January, um, the town stands at 55.55% in revenues and 63.94% in expenditures. So anybody have any questions? I just need a motion to approve the financials.
I make the motion to approve. Always a little bit much, uh, how much, uh, money we've got left in taxes that haven't been collected. They're in the period and, uh, I think we've collected maybe 50%, 55% so far. Well, we haven't collected, the county collects.
Right, right.
Keep in mind, you've got taxes in 11 and 14 and 13 as well. You've got, taxes are in more than funds 10.
What?
Why? Because we have five funds for general fund, which we would love to take away if we can get new financial software.
Yeah, so it's split, it's split up.
Shameless plug.
Yeah, they're all really general fund. This, I don't know, I've never seen another municipality have that many funds. It's usually general.
All the taxes are on you.
No, they're split because you have to pay taxes, um, out of all of them. But, so like, library is at 46%. They should be clearing up after February. 11, which is your fire tax, is at 58%. So I mean, you gotta add all that up. We're more than 50%. We can give you all the exact number, but, um, Angie didn't bring her computer, so we don't have the access to the spreadsheet.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not looking for an answer. I'm saying, I just, I just thought it was unusual.
Yeah, that's why.
I didn't have a chance to look at it much, but that's all right. What it is, what it is.
Who has the motion?
I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the financials.
We've already got our.
We got a motion, may.
All in favor, say aye. Both no. The budget amendment number two.
Okay, um, this is a budget amendment to, um, move funds out of salaries into the separation allowance. We're getting ready to have, um, our captain retire. So we have to take, he will be getting four payroll periods. So we gotta take this 5970 out of separate, I mean, out of the, um, salaries and put it into the separation allowance. So that's what this is for. So I just need a motion to approve to do the budget amendment.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Both no.
Okay, thank y'all.
Okay, Ms. Town Manager.
Okay, so, um, just to let y'all know, Friday, I am gonna be out of the office. I'm available by phone, but, um, I will be away. Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, I'm gonna be in Charlotte at the ICSC of Charlotte with Electric Cities. Um, trying to promote our town and see if we can get some businesses in here. Tuesday and Wednesday, I'll be at the ICSC of Charlotte.
What, what are you going for?
To promote Benson, so it, to see if we can get some businesses in Benson. It's kind of a pre-show to the Vega, to Las Vegas ICS, the national show. This is just for North Carolina, so trying to get our name on, in people's minds. Next week is, uh, Creek Week, so promoting no littering and, um, because when you litter, it goes down our storm drains and into our rivers and, and streams. So on Friday, the 24th, we will have a cleanup day. Um, we are gonna have a special Creek Week story time at the library on Tuesday. And then we are also doing a coloring contest with, um, our area kids, uh, K through 5, or ages 4 through.
11.
15. So, um, those coloring sheets have been dispersed out to the school and they're also available at the library. Um, Monday is our, at 1 o'clock, the Holiday Inn Express is, is doing a groundbreaking ceremony. If you guys are available to come, please come out and, um, join in that event. As Erin's already mentioned, the UDO, um, public work, public workshop is Thursday from 11:00 to 1:00 and 4:00 to 6:00 here in the conference center. We would love to see y'all. And then this weekend is a very busy weekend in the town of Benson. Um, Friday night, the Chamber is doing their halfway to mule days reverse raffle at Broadslab. Saturday, Jerry and I will be, uh, doing judging contests for a chili cook-off at Fanning Goat. Um, it's part of their St. Baldrick's celebration. They'll have a chili cook-off and a cornhole tournament going on. So that'll be really fun. And then Sunday in the Grove, Hope Ministries is having a concert from 4:00 to 8:00. It's completely free to the public. They will have food trucks and vendors out there. Donations are welcome and, um, they're having a Christian concert, Rare of Breed will be singing. So be a busy weekend. That's all I have. Oh, sorry, it's not all I have. Two more things. Sorry. I, I gave each of you five of these handouts as for our retail customer survey for Electric Cities. So please pass this out to five people that have the electric utility with the town of Benson, so they'll fill out our survey. Um, it lets us know, we try to do it every so often, what, what we can do better on, what we're doing great on. And also I gave you all a, um, agenda for NCLM's City Works, um, convention that's gonna be held in April, April 26th through 28th. Um, this is gonna be the first year that they've had it in person for the last, since the last three years because of COVID. Um, this is a conference where local government, um, employees and boards get together and talk about, it's a leadership program. So they talk about, um, engage in leadership training, learn about issues impacting our communities and share effective strategies for improvement. If any of you would like to attend, please let me know so we can get you registered in the early bird. Um, because it's only 3:75 if we do it early and it progressively moves up after that. So if you wanna attend, let me know. And now I'm done.
Will you be happy, honey? Will?
Yes, sir. Something real quick. I want to commend, um, the chief back there. I think he's still here.
He's here.
Well, on, uh, actually getting some of his officers out on the streets. Uh, had one that I know of that, that Max Rayner. Uh, had one that I know of that parked at, uh, Max Rainer's office during the day, and he walked to each business, and I've got a lot of great feedback from that, been preaching it for over ten years, it's time that it happened. People on Main Street don't know who our officers are, and now they're beginning to know them by name. Uh, great, uh, great job, uh, from him. And also, uh, I had mentioned something about more police representation at nights in their shopping centers, at, uh, when these businesses are closing. We had one robbery over at, uh, Food Line two years ago, at night, right when they were closing. And probably if we had had a police officer's car sitting out there, it may or may not have happened. But I'm seeing more of that at ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night. Uh, I've got a business that's closing up there, Food Line, uh, Dollar General. Uh, I think they appreciate, uh, the representation when the officers are not doing anything else. And, uh, I, I just want to, uh, Greg, if you're responsible for that, I, I appreciate you, uh, having them do that. And your other, the, uh, other officer that, uh, was up here earlier tonight, I've seen him out a lot too. Uh, I reckon maybe I see them more at nights than I see anybody else during the day. Appreciate it.
I'm fine.
Just, uh, a couple of things. It's, uh, one thing we have to do every day that we're having a board meeting is to find out if we've got a quarrel. And, uh, I think everybody calls everybody sooner or later that, that I'll be here. But we'd like to set it up so, so our clerk is the one that gets the call when you can't be here. Uh, now, we know about your schedule, so it's, it's not necessary, but, uh, please call her and let her know that you're not gonna be here and try to do it the day before if, if possible, rather than calling me sometimes and, you know, commissioners. Second thing is, we have a meeting this week with the, uh, with DOT, actually for two things, uh, that Kim told you about, uh, the roundabout. Uh, but the other was, I've, uh, I've had a number of calls lately from people telling me that isn't there something that, something that can be done on Main Street so that it's safe across the street? And, uh, you know, we've, we've talked about it, but we really hadn't done anything about it. But, uh, DOT came back with a plan to, uh, to do some crosswalks, and they, they have words for it. But, uh, as far as I know, they're gonna pay for it, but I gotta find that out, because I just, uh, I just got that answer back with, uh, with the information. So does anybody have, uh, any indigestion of, of putting crosswalks on Main Street so that it was a little more identified to the trucks that are coming through there forty miles an hour?
You mean just repaint the ones that are already there?
I thought, I thought it's possible, so.
I think they're gonna hatch them.
They're gonna hatch?
They're not all the way across the street, are they?
And they're gonna, yeah, I can, I can forward you guys the email with the, the plan and my response, they. Like, no, I think just like, make them more visible, because right now, they're just two lines that go across.
Cross paint.
I think they're gonna put, yeah, hatch marks.
They ain't gonna make it there safer?
Well, that's, I think there's.
Well, it would make it safer for court if they got hit and, and, and they were in their crosswalk.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think there's steps that DOT has to take, you know, this is kind of step one, step two, maybe.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say, I mean.
Yeah, well, I, I, I threw that out there, but, and they wanted to know if we wanted to move the crosswalk at Johnson and Main, but I told him people still, people use that quite often, I mean, I know I use it, but, so they, I, I asked them, don't move that, leave that, but they wanted to put one a little further down, like across from Walgreens where the front entrance to the Grove is, and so I said, add a second one. So I think that's probably what they'll do.
If, if, but you talking about that one at Johnson and Main, there needs to be signage up, the pedestrians has got the right of way. You know, I don't think there is any signage up.
I can, I can make a note to, to add that to my comment.
They do, well, I mean, if you got probably signage up and everything, crosswalk, they do have the right of way.
So I'll forward you guys the email, it's got two, um, attachments to it, so y'all have it, and then what my response was, and I'll add that, um, if they can put signage up there.
Anything else?
Yeah, since you're talking about that, I've got it written down, and I forgot to, uh, bring it up. Uh, the roundabout that, uh, there's been a lot of discussion on, and now they postponed it again. Uh, I was in a DOT meeting Monday. Uh, we've got really documentation that this board needs to take a stand and decide whether or not we want the roundabout there. You talking about a cluster, we're gonna have one if we allow DOT to put it. We can come up with, this board saying, we can present a resolution, and it will help us not getting that roundabout. You talking about listening to some people right here in town, they're already up in arms about having a roundabout, and we have already got, you're trying to slow the trucks down on, on, uh, Fifty Highway, on Main Street, and we're gonna put a roundabout in that is gonna, we don't, we've got trucks right now that can't hardly get over fifty and, and three oh one without scrubbing. You can't have a low boy come through there, and with what they are planning on doing. Uh, everybody in town says, why is this board having a roundabout put in? This board's not.
It's not up to the board.
It's up to the board to take a stand that we don't need that roundabout.
Let me just, before we take any type of stand, let me caution that there has been a bid that has gone out, and there has been an award to a bid. So, and, and materials have been purchased. So allow, if, if this is where y'all are headed, allow me to contact the engineer of the project and ask what implication the town is gonna have if y'all do take a stand, like a resolution to cancel the project. Because if we have to pay to this contractor for the work that's already been done, do we, do we want to continue to take that stand? I'm just laying some caution out there.
Work has been done.
Materials have been ordered, mater, I mean, they pretty much.
Utilities, some utilities has already been.
Utilities have been moved, yeah.
I got a phone call from a friend, I called Kim about it, probably about two weeks ago, this engineer was, and when, uh, he called me and told me that he'd heard some rebuttal down here, and wanted to know, and, and I called Kim about it. He, he called me and said, I wanna know what the board's stance is at the town of Benson. And I said, well, I don't know how the entire board feels, I said, I've heard some talking about it, I said, but we've not really taken a stance at the board. But he did advise me, which I questioned Kim on, that the bid has already gone out, the contractor's probably already ordered materials. And so if we did take a stance that he may, or they may reconsider, and that we may be able to fight it, but there would be possibly some cost implications that the town would be responsible for to buy the contractor out of what they've already spent.
And I can tell you, I think they've pretty much ordered everything, they've ordered everything, the only thing they have not been able to obtain is the,
Is the boxes.
The boxes and some of the piping, the steel pipes.
Their original contract stated it was gonna be done by this date.
Yeah, but they'll do an amendment to that contract for the date that I gave y'all, which, and, and let me just say this too. I haven't told y'all until today, because I was told in the meeting Friday that I would get an official word in two weeks. So until I get an official word, I don't like to throw it out there because it can change. But, um, but I went ahead and sent it to y'all today in anticipation that something may come up about it. So, um, now I forgot where I was going with your question, what did you say? I know, I'm sorry, I know, but I know that they have ordered materials.
They've talked about the ramifications.
Oh, yes, okay, they'll do a, they'll do a cha, they'll do a change order on the date. But they have to have concurrence from the contractor that they can do it at the date, and concurrence that the town is okay with the date. You know, when they originally came to us, they were asking us, you know, what, what is your biggest concern, mule days? And I said, um, no, you have mule days, you have the scene, you have Veterans Celebration, Christmas on Main. We're pretty busy after June, in that area, so, um, we need to get through all that first. So they'll have to get concurrence from both us and the contractor when to start the work. But we don't have final, um, resolution on that for a couple more weeks.
Well, I'll tell you this, the decision to put that roundabout there, what an hours. It came from the Safety Committee at DOT. Because of the number of actions been there, it's on the list. And, and they get, if they get sued, they're responsible for not taking care of the problem. If somebody got killed there, then they, they would have, uh, the, the lawsuit on them. And that's why they came and did that, I remember, uh, Will and I sat together on the board then, and, and we told them, go do your work, go spend your seventy-five thousand dollars it takes to get the price, find out how much it'll cost, and then come back and tell us what it is, well, they never came back. But that, that's the pressure they're under on the, on the roundabout.
They had two hundred and seventy-five thousand to do an engineer study, and I made it clear to them that this board would have the, the say-so, because they have never done a roundabout within that close of a railroad. And right this minute, any day, you could be out there, Adam was out there two weeks ago because they had shut down ninety-five, and he was out directing traffic, and if anybody from DOT would have shown up, they would have found out. And he videoed that we can't have a lot of traffic coming through there, it was already backed up, almost to coats, and all the way down to ninety-five, and there's cars sitting on the railroad just getting through the stop sign. The stop light up though, it's, it's, it's not even feasible for, for them to be doing what they're doing. And DOT, we meet with DOT and the Highway Patrol and everybody Monday. And you know, it's, it's kind of, uh, it's kind of a joke. Here's fifty people from emergency management and DOT, and all of their representatives from federal DOT, or, or the guys out here on ninety-five, and we're still discussing as far as us shutting down ninety-five about once a month for a wreck, and bringing them through Benson to Four Oaks, or Four Oaks to Dove, and it, it's a mess. What's it gonna be when we have a roundabout there that they can't even get over? We have got transfer trucks that's hauling cars that get stuck right now without a roundabout.
Yeah, if you can get me on, I'm not an expert on roundabouts. I can get you. I'm not an expert on roundabouts.
This ain't gonna be a roundabout.
So I can't answer your questions.
Well, I asked.
They're ready to ask thing about getting it done.
Well, I asked the question that night, had they ever done one that close to the railroad, and their answer was no. And then I gave them the scenario of one of the lone trains and traffic backed up gridlock, it's gonna be gridlocked, they said it'd eventually move.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
The night that they came in here and put all their stuff, there were six engineers from DOT, they put all their maps up there, and I asked them, who makes the decision? Well, we do. I said, no. Four of y'all that are here said that it was the board's, uh, would be the board's recommendation. Do you think we've spent two hundred and seventy thousand dollars on a, on, on just a plan that we wasn't planning on going through with? I said, exactly what he told me. And I said, well, you're a lying bastard then, because that's what I feel like.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Uh, we're finished.